Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, April 2nd, 2013. I guess it is on, okay. I wasn't really hearing that. For those of you who aren't regular visitors to the council chambers, we have gone paperless, but there are agendas on the wall to your right if you wanted to take a look at that and follow along as we go. Otherwise, I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Moller?
Here.
Councilmember Dorenbecker?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here.
Let the record reflect that Vice Mayor Chilton is excused.
Thank you very much, and he may show up later in the meeting depending on how long we're here tonight. Please join me if you can and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we continue, I did want to just make a comment, an announcement, really. We did lose one of our very well-known community figures recently. Oscar Rhodes passed away, and he was affectionately known as "The Paper Boy" for the Yountville Sun, as I'm sure most or all of you know, the husband of Sharon Stensis. And I just ask if we could all just have a moment of silence and remember Oscar. Thank you very much. Let's move on now to item four, adoption of tonight's agenda. Are there any changes, or is there a motion to adopt?
I'll move to adopt the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next up, we're going to go to public comment, and that's for any items that are not already on tonight's agenda. So if you know that we're going to be getting to your item, we'll have public participation then, but this is for anything that's not on the agenda. And we did receive an email. I see the sender of the emails here this evening, but if you want me to strive just to recognize that email, or would you like to address the topic this evening, Carla? Would you like me to? So I'll just reference then the fact that we did receive an email from Carla Rife. And I'll paraphrase the email. It is "In opposition to any changes to the parking bays and streets of Washington Park with respect to ADA curb cuts." And that's an item that's not on tonight's agenda but will be added at a future date, and there are conversations between community members and town staff ongoing. Are there any other comments from the public on an item that's not on tonight's agenda? Yes, please. I think I may have set the tone for this.
I think so. I think so. And Bruce Tosker talking about Washington Park a little bit, and I am here, and I don't know if everybody's going to talk or not, but we want to thank you because this is a complex issue. There's a lot of various opinions, a lot of very creative opinions have come out. We're all learning things every day. We've just gotten some documents to talk about rural ADA requirements which seem to be different than big-city ADA requirements, and there's a lot going on and a lot learning and putting this project off for X number of months until we all learn and taking it off the bid process right now. We much appreciate that so we can all catch our breath and learn.
Great, thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak to that or any other item not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing no one else, we'll move right ahead, and we will go to the consent calendar. We have two items on that consent calendar, the A-Bag voting delegation and approval of previous minutes. Are there any comments, or is there action?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next up, we get to do some fun stuff tonight. Presentations, we have three. The first one is recognition of Philippe Jean-T and Bistro Jean-T celebrating their 15th anniversary. So if you could join me at the podium.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for inviting me.
I have a much nicer elegant-looking certificate that's framed that I'm going to present to you, but I'm going to use my stunt version.
All right.
That I can actually read a little bit better.
Thank you.
So I'm going to just turn this this way. This certificate of appreciation is awarded to Philippe Jean-T and Bistro Jean-T, their 15th-year anniversary celebration. Critically acclaimed and a local favorite, Bistro Jean-T is recognized as a key ingredient in the town's success as a culinary destination where one comes to Yountville to taste life here. Moreover, Bistro Jean-T and Chef Jean-T are also recognized for their considerable contributions to the Yountville community, helping to enrich the quality of life for our residents and our visitors.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll put it this way for TV first. We're looking up there, and then let's turn it around and let everyone else back here take a look. So there it is.
Well, I got to, I came to Yountville June 6, 1977, to take on a position at Domain Chandon, which was the first plane trip I think I took of my life. And that was kind of an interesting adventure and wonderful adventure. The town has changed tremendously. I keep saying I wish I had money back then because you could buy a house in Yountville for $18,000 back then. This changed a little bit, but this award really should go to all the people that have worked with me and have worked for me in the last 40 years, 35 years. I want to acknowledge Kelly Mitchell, Jax, that is here tonight. She's worked at Bistro Jean-T for 10 years as my general manager, and without her I couldn't have survived. But I think it's important to realize that the success of Yountville is really because of all the people that come here and do their job, day in and day out. Taking care of all the visitors that we get is not an easy task and sometimes is very challenging. And the people that work in all the incredible restaurants that we have in Yountville is a credit to the people that do the job. So really, this is not just for me, but it's for all these people that have done such a wonderful job over the years, and I will definitely be forever grateful for that. Anyway, and I am grateful for this award. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Only took 15 years to earn that. Well, and here's, I guess we're doing this in order of seniority. Our next recognition is Terry Moyle, Public Works Utility Operator, for his 25 years of public service to the town of Yountville. So Terry, if you would, join me. Great, congratulations. Thanks for being here tonight. Oh, actually, we have one more piece of little something here, so I'm going to have you hold on to that.
All right.
And I'm going to go ahead and use my more legible version. This is a certificate of appreciation in recognition of Terry Moyle's 25 years of service as a Town of Yountville employee. It's an honor to celebrate 25 years of dedicated and conscientious service on the part of Terry Moyle to the Town of Yountville. Terry began his career on March 22nd, 1988, and has served the town well as a wastewater treatment plant operator in its Public Works Department. Terry serves as an exemplary model of a public servant dedicated to providing quality service above and beyond to the town which he also calls home. Terry, thank you very much. Let's open this up also. We've got the certificate itself, and then there's a little something in here. We've got a little something else that we're going to hand Andy in a second, but again, if folks can see, recognition of Terry's long and dedicated service.
All right, thank you.
You've got to point this one a little higher, I think.
Yeah.
I'll leave that for you.
Well, I consider myself very fortunate to live here and work for Yountville. It's been an interesting journey for me. You know, the one thing, though, about Yountville, and it's changed in some ways. It's still the same with a lot of residents, and they still keep using the toilets, so I still have a job.
That's good.
It may be a little different each day. I'm sort of reminded of Forrest Gump's statement that "Life's like a box of chocolates," except mine are a little bit unedible at times, so I'm always dead. But I thank you very much. My family and I have enjoyed living here in Yountville all this time.
Great. And Terry, actually Samantha has the one envelope that I forgot to put in there for you as well. Thank you on behalf of the entire council for your great years of service. And next up, we are going to recognize our own town manager, Steve Rogers, for receiving his International City County Management Association, or we like to refer to it as ICMA, credentialed manager certification. So, town manager, if you would also join me.
Maybe Samuel can crop our pictures because she's going to have the mayor's side.
Congratulations. Thank you. I only have one copy of this one, so I hope I can read it. This is from the ICMA leaders at the core of Better Communities. This is to recognize Stephen R. Rogers as an ICMA credentialed manager, qualified by a combination of education and experience in professional local government management, by adherence to high standards of integrity, and by demonstrated commitment to lifelong learning and professional development since October 2012. There you go. I don't know if I dare pin this on you, but why not? Looks good.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Okay, we'll see how that turned out.
See, that's his dedicated service. Just gets right back to work. No comments.
Okay.
Thank you very much. It's really a great pleasure of all of ours to be able to recognize the hard work that goes into making this town run so efficiently and provide the services that we do to our residents, so thanks. And we also have our, it looks like just about, almost our entire Public Works crew here tonight recognizing Terry. So thanks, guys, for being here and supporting your partners, and partner in crime, so to speak. Thanks. Okay, we are going to move on to our public hearing for this evening, which is regarding our master fee schedule. If we, thank you all very much. I know we have restaurants to get back to and the end result of those restaurants to get back to.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Well, I guess the rest of this meeting will be real stimulating.
We're a little, thank you very much. We're a little lopsided in the audience, but that's all right. Everyone wants to sit where the camera can see you. Not sure if you knew that or not. Master fee schedule, we can start with the staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As you know, several years ago, we consolidated and updated all of the fee structures that had been comprised in the municipal code into one document. And in that update, the council directed the staff to do an annual review and to look at when necessary adjustments and to look also at use of a CPI. This year, we have very few adjustments to the master fee schedule, and in fact, some fees are actually remaining the same. The CPI adjustment is 2.4 percent, so most fees are adjusted by that amount. Swimming pool fees, for example, are staying the same. A number of the town's fees and charges are actually set by a deposit amount. Planning and a lot of our planning, building, Public Works Department review are actually done on a deposit rather than a fixed fee on an hourly basis. We also have only a handful of new fees. One is a state-mandated fee that the state requires us to charge, which is a SB 1186, State Mandate Disability Access and Education Fee of $1 for a building permit. We've had increasing reliance and use on public works barricades and signs for public events and special events, excuse me, special events that are not necessarily sponsored by the town, and we're looking at a cost recovery when we need to put no parking or other events when it's not directly benefiting the town, and that would be $3 per sign. The recent exterior display of merchandise use permit application, council had asked us to reduce that to 250, and the annual monitoring fee to 220. And then we have the initial application and annual subscription renewal for the new Wayfinding Sign Program. With that, I'm really open to questions, but for the most part, it's a 2.4 percent increase. And just to give an example, the Heritage Room, the rental rate is, market rate is $248 an hour, a Yountville resident rate is $103 an hour, and a Yountville nonprofit rate is $96 an hour. No change, as I mentioned, in swim fees and another other related drop in in park and recreation. There is a small increase in some of the park and rec costs to help offset the implementation of the new online registration component that was requested by residents. So with that, it's really a very modest component. Answer any questions specifically. I will apologize in our earnest of trying to get everything online. We actually put, the municipal fee resolution is not 70-some pages, it's only 33 broken down. We just happened to publish it twice.
Double.
So I do apologize for that, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have on the fee structure.
And I thought that was just your way of making it seem like a 33-page document was short. Any questions about staff report? Councilmember Hall?
I have one question. Thank you, Steve, for the report. One quick question. Did we go and do any sort of analysis on what the new rates would mean incrementally to the town in the form of income if we applied the units that were utilized in the prior year? So what would this net rate increase actually have attributed to the town in the form of income?
In some areas, when there was an analysis on justification for rates, that was done in some areas, for example, with the rental revenue for the community center and things like that, but where there was no recommendation for change, and it's just a simple CPI adjustment, to be perfectly honest, we haven't extrapolated. We built that into the revenue models that, are we, excuse me, we will build that into the revenue models depending on the council's action as we move into the budget. So your action is necessary for us to complete our budget projections. And if you may recall, this was one of the modifications in our budget process where we realized that adopting fees in June for July was counterintuitive to trying to make sure that we understood what the fee structure was going to be in place for July 1. So that's why you're seeing it much earlier.
And I guess just one, thank you. I guess one follow-on question to that is, with regards to the CPI adjustment, has this been a historical measure or standard we used, have used for the CPI adjustment, which is the San Francisco-Oakland-San Jose CPI?
That's correct.
For that relative same-time period?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorenbecker?
I have a few. Under Administrative Services, when did we start charging for Agenda Packet Subscription? And why do we?
Agenda Packet Subscriptions were, it actually, that goes back a long, long time when packets were produced and mailed. And nowadays, we actually have, we encourage people to simply sign up and we send them an email link with it and online, but that's to recover your production cost of the paper if somebody requests it and mailed to them. But that's been a longstanding 15-plus-year charge.
And we don't have any subscribers. That would be if we were to, if they weren't able to access it online and view those staff reports. If they wanted to receive special situation where they receive a full staff report or Agenda and all the attachments, then that would be the subscription charge. We do have a mail-only Agenda distribution of about 18 people who receive the Agenda at no charge, but if they wanted the full packet like council receives or used to receive, then that would be related to the subscription charge, and we currently don't have any of those users.
I see.
And staff really works really well with people that are interested to make sure that they know how they can find it and the most cost-effective. What we did have, there were some people that simply did not want to do any homework and just wanted to get everything, and then that does have, you know, some of our packets were, you know, yay big. So it really is just a paper production cost recovery, and with technology, really, I don't anticipate we'll have a lot of people signing up for that.
And under business licenses, I noticed that the business license renewal processing application fee is $15, and the business license annual tax is 20, so isn't it actually $35?
They're two separate, you get billed for both when you do it, so yes, the net product is that because the business license tax is actually set, that is set by code and then our municipal, and would have to be changed by a vote. We have a very low business license tax. In fact, I mean, almost incredibly artificially low. So, but you're correct, you put the two together, and that's also why, you'll note, the first initial application processing fee is slightly higher, and then the annual renewal is less.
And then, under notice of intent to circulate a petition, is that something that we voted on, the town council voted on?
Again, this fee structure, all of these fees, unless they were identified as ones that we identified as new, have been in the municipal code for a number of years in the fee structure.
And this is prescribed by actually election code, so we're just capturing what the election code allows us to do, and we're noting it here. So that's an election code requirement.
Then I noticed some things in the appendix I wanted to ask you about. I know that we're, you know, concerned about recapturing costs, so that, that I understand. Anyway, I'll hold my questions for later.
Well, I would say, we try to, in our fee structure, we try to have a balance. There are some items that, based on council philosophy, we don't actually recover 100%. For example, many of our park and recreation fees do not recover 100%. On the other hand, when we have a situation like a building permit or something like that, we do try to get 100% cost recovery because that's specifically a service and a benefit to that particular individual.
I understand. Thank you.
Any other questions about the staff report? Seeing no others, I'll open the public hearing portion of this item, and I'll start off with recognizing an email that was sent, and I'm not sure, were you going to address this item? Okay, Carla, so I'll go ahead and just let you do that. We did receive an email from Carla Rife. She's present, so I'll let her explain her position.
Good evening. My name's Carla Rife, R-E-Y-F-F, two F's and two Franks, and I live at 11 Forester Lane in Yountville. Just to be clear, I don't do email. These are letters. And one of the reasons I don't do email is because I use the email computers at the library, and they're not open every day, so I can only do that when the library's open and available to the public. I had given you a letter with respect to the master fee schedule, and what I had basically said in the letter, I don't need to read the whole thing as loud, is that I was opposed to any increases in fees that would affect the local, full-time residential community in Yountville. I was, I'm particularly concerned with the fees that related to recreational uses for residents, including but not limited to our community swimming pool, community hall, and community center. Yountville has moved more and more towards supporting its business community during the last 18 years since I've lived here. While many contend that this trickle-down effect has a good effect on the local community, I would like to see more attention paid to the locals, especially those who have limited incomes, and believe it or not, there are people in Yountville who do have limited incomes. Local residents have graciously put up with many inconveniences so that the tourist and business communities can thrive. We've endured higher water bills, we've lost local serving businesses such as lower restaurants for families, our car repair shop, and even our deer ranch market is slowly changing to become a little tourist tchotchke shop. And we have to endure more government now, even though our full-time residential population has most certainly declined since I moved here. Some examples, I believe that locals should be exempt from paying to use our swimming pool, or at least pay a very minimal charge. And I noticed, Steve, you said that you hadn't changed the rates. My memory isn't that good. I don't use the pool very often. I did go last summer. I thought it was $3 for kids and $4, and I think now it's going to be $4 and $5, but that, I've remembered that incorrectly?
Let me, I'll double-check and give you a direct answer.
I can answer that.
Go ahead, please, Samantha.
So the fees were increased as of July 1st of last summer?
That's what happened, yes, because I was up there.
And so they have not been adjusted again this year. They've stayed the same.
They did go up last year, and it was the one year that I did not come and protest raising them, so I take responsibility for that. But anyway, I thought that a lot of kids use that pool, and some of them are local. A lot of people come from Napa and other places to use it. I felt that it should stay minimal for the people who live here and let the other people pick up the slack if that's a problem, or take out the diving board if it's an insurance problem, although I have to admit, the kids love that diving board. Recently also, some neighbors wanted to hold a fundraiser for our local family saddled with catastrophic hospital bills, but they were unable to contract for their own community center because of the high fees involved. Now, I don't know the particulars of this incident because I didn't try to do that, but I think you all know who I'm talking about. And it seemed to me that when I moved here, if something like that happened to a local family and they wanted to use the town hall to raise some money, they would have just given it to us, period, and say, you know, "You guys can use it." This was the town hall before the community center was built, and, you know, "Clean it up, and if you leave it in the same shape that we got it, we're not going to charge you anything." It seems to me that that's how it used to work, but now there's a cleanup bill and somebody's got to be on duty because you've got to have this, you've got to have that, and it seemed to be kind of high. And another small example occurred when the Master Gardeners gave a workshop in Yountville and had to charge $15 instead of its usual $5 because of extra bureaucratic fees imposed by the town of Yountville. Now, the Master Gardeners recently gave a workshop here. They gave the identical workshop in Napa, opened to the public, charged $5. The advertising said, "You take it in Napa, it's $5. You take it in Yountville, it's $15." That doesn't seem, why do we need the cut? We're the richest town in the valley, aren't we? So it seemed like that was an unnecessary fee when Napa could do it for $5. Why would we have to charge our people $15? One thing, I do go to an exercise class every week, twice a week, and it's in Rancho de Napa. It's free, and there's no fees attached to that, and I think that that same kind of thing could be done here. I see a lot of people taking exercise classes over there. A lot of them don't live in Yountville. Maybe a lower differential could be looked at there as opposed to $7 or $5 difference. It's not very different. And I don't think you guys are in business to make money. I think you're in business to serve the public, and that's what government does. When I was a kid, we used to go to our local community center. We'd go there, they'd have dances on Friday night, they'd have open basketball. All that stuff was free. So I would hope that you might consider doing some of that for our local, full-time, permanent residents as opposed to always subsidizing the businesses and always subsidizing the chamber. This is nickel-and-dine stuff, and I think people would appreciate. This is nickel-and-dine stuff and I think people would appreciate it. So, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you for your comments.
That's it.
Any others like to speak on the master fee schedule staff report? Any other comments? Seeing no others, I'll close the public hearing portion of this and return the discussion back to the town council. Councilmember Mueller, would you like to begin the conversation?
I know this is our official action tonight, but I know that we have also spent quite a bit of time talking through a lot of these, these details. So I think the staff's done a great job and we do support a lot of these activities with town money. So I'm fine with this resolution.
Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. Mayor, I would, first of all, in general, agree with that. I mean, the town staff and the community has had some input with regards to its action on whether or not these, these items are fairly priced or reasonably priced. I would like to at least comment to how we deal with cost and cost recovery in the activities. And I know we've put Sam and her department through the wringer on trying to recover what was, what we felt at least starting to become a reasonable approach. And the challenge is that if we aren't recovering cost, what happens is that we have to reallocate resources and eliminate something else. And I don't necessarily know that myself or any of us sitting here at any given point in time can say what the best thing to eliminate would be. And so, that said, I mean, I think we've been at least prudent in our analysis. We're not using more than what the appropriate level of, and historical level of CPI that's been measured and identified with this type of adjustment to our fee schedule. I know this council did set out a process by which we felt that incremental change was better and more appropriate than one time very difficult to explain and large changes in the form of cost recoveries. And so I think that we're following that sort of discipline, which is important. I feel that it's reasonably, or at least it seems that what we've done is consistent with our message to the community and that we're being reasonable in our application of cost increase. And so I feel that we're at least being consistent with our plan and I can support that. And I wish we had more money to subsidize those types of activities for all residents and certainly maybe we can identify other areas in the future that we can evaluate. But open dialogue is what we appreciate the most and that's, it's what we, we hope to continue. So that's, those are my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Dornbecker?
Well, we, I know that we do underwrite the cost of the pool and other things, other community, especially in the park and rec department. And we want to do that, I wish we could do more of it. But I am concerned at what Ms. Riff said about when there is a longtime resident in our town who has a tragic circumstance and comes to the town. I would like us to figure out a way that we can help a family in need like that and, you know, so that they can hold a reception to raise funds. And I'm sort of embarrassed that we don't have a, you know, process that we could do that would allow that to, you know, the town to donate the time, the facility. So I would like the staff to consider how we can go about instituting something that certainly, you know, not every nonprofit deserves that, not every, and certainly for-profit, you know, events. But when there is a true need and even, you know, for some of these classes, if there are people who really cannot afford it but, you know, need to have some support from the town, I agree with Ms. Riff. The town residents put up with a lot because we are such a tourist destination. And I think in return, we need to do everything we can to help and, and support them too.
I want to, you've mentioned a few things that I think are worthy to point out. And the town does have a youth subsidy fund and we raise money. And I have to point out frankly, it's mostly staff that raises the money for the youth subsidy fund. And we will underwrite the recreation fees and programming costs for families up to about three hundred and sixty a year. Also, under the council, the council has a policy for fee waivers and program support. And I'm, I appreciate Mrs. Riff's concern and I also appreciate her honesty where she said she didn't know the full details. Under the council policy, staff met with representatives, several different representatives on different approaches to the Westbury fundraiser. They didn't quite meet some of the criteria. We offered the lowest rental rate from a resident standpoint. We also offered opportunities to look at a park rental if it was more appropriate for their budget. But in that vein, if you may recall in the last report, the council provided over eighty-six thousand dollars in fee waiver for nonprofit, community-based groups. And that was really the challenge in this particular case that she's referring to is it wasn't a nonprofit. It was, the checks were going to an individual and we didn't have a, a program. But staff did try to work with them on some different alternatives. So I do hear your, your point. And I think we tried that. The council's made it clear that they do look at that. Your point about the pool, you're absolutely correct. We have about an eighty thousand dollar general fund subsidy. And we still don't have a full cost recovery, nor has the council asked for one hundred percent cost recovery on our park and recreation fees. And when you look at your park and rec brochure, you will note that there is a, a market rate and if you will, a resident discount rate anywhere between ten and twenty percent depending on the program. So that, the council's policy and practice. I think we will continue to do more. Staff's also researching opportunities to do some additional fundraising for a senior subsidy fund so that we could identify. We're not insensitive to that. And I'm not quite sure about the, the comment made about the Master Gardeners because we actually have a, a program in place with them where they get free use of our facilities in exchange for providing programs. So I don't know why the Master Gardeners would choose to charge more for their event that they had here than they had in Napa. But we have a fee waiver in place for that particular organization and we have a great, a great partnership with the Master Gardeners. They provide a good content and I think a lot of that's been a win-win. I will point out to something that council member Hall alluded to. At times, our size is both a blessing and a curse. We're very intimate, small, but when you come to looking at a fixed cost comparing ourselves to Napa, if we have ten people participating in a class, the instructor needs X dollars to instruct the class. Often, the city of Napa, because they have a larger population density, they have thirty people coming to the class. So, I mean, I'm just going to say, if the, you divide by ten, divide by thirty, the per-cost unit is going to be lower in Napa simply. We don't have large numbers and that's been, that's our challenge. We have a very robust offering, but in some cases, it does come with a slight cost because of that unit. And, and we try really hard to, to get that down as low as we can. But I do hear, you know, and I want to make sure the community knows that the council has asked us to be both balanced in our cost recovery. And you have identified park and recreation as one of those areas where you want us to have more flexibility.
Thank you, I appreciate the town manager's comments. And, and I invite anyone that would like to participate in our budget conversations that we're having over the next several weeks and have already had several times to participate in that also. We discuss at great length the fee structures, cost recovery, which has been important for this council, to recognize the need to recover costs. We also protect our local residents in a significant way across the board with the diversity of programming as well as structured schedule, fee schedule that does charge more for non-residents. We do give additional breaks for local nonprofits versus valley nonprofits. A challenge is, when do you, how do you define what is a true need? Everyone thinks that their, their particular project or event is going to be, you know, meet that threshold. It's really challenging in some cases. And we try to be as flexible and I think the staff does an excellent job of being flexible and working with the, the groups that come, not only for rentals, but just getting creative with opportunities like making available the public park areas and that type of thing. But it is important that we look long-term and very complete and overall about cost, cost recovery and the ability, as councilmember Hall said, to not cut services. We have a very robust, I'll use that word again, level of service for our residents, which I'm very proud of. And again, this year, we expect to have a balanced budget that does not reduce or cut those services. We need to recover some of our costs in order to maintain that level of service. So I'll just recognize that. I appreciate staff's in-depth review of the fees and willingness to make adjustments. I know we, we say we want to protect our residents and then we come to you and say, why aren't your cost recovery percentages higher? And, and then we leave it to you to figure out what we really mean. But I think you've done a very good job of, of following our direction with, with this. So without any other comments from council, is there a motion to be had?
I can make a motion to request approval for resolution number three zero nine nine dash thirteen, adopting the master fee schedule, including reaffirming existing fees, adjusting current fees, and adding new fees for the fiscal year 2013, 2014.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. That item does pass unanimously. And we're all clicking our way back to our next item, the first administrative regular item, the Yountville Municipal Code. May we have a staff report, please? As soon as we're all clicked and ready to go?
I'll take this one. I thought, and then Arnold can shine in as well, the town attorney. This is an update and quite frankly, if you look at it, it is a simple update. The council had previously adopted an ordinance, it included a dollar amount, and then it had a clause that said, we need to review this periodically based on what the state changes. The state controller has issued new numbers and the base of twenty-five for threshold for requiring bids on projects has been changed to forty-five. And from forty-five, excuse me, from twenty-five to one hundred for informal bids is now forty-five to one seventy-five. And one hundred thousand to one hundred and seventy-five for formal bids. And I will point out, this is, only applies to public works and projects that are meeting the California Code for Uniform Construction Cost Accounting Act. The action tonight is simply to implement the new numbers as authorized by the state controller. So if you have any questions, I'm, Arnold and I are there, but that's really as complicated as it is.
Your questions, you want us to direct to the state controller, is that what you're, you're trying to say?
No, I'm just saying, this is actually a positive thing from staff's perspective. It helps us to be more proactive with implementing certain public works projects. It just adjusts basically the level of bidding threshold from informal to a formal bid to reflect, you know, inflationary adjustments from the base year that this law was put into effect.
And does town attorney have anything to add to the staff report?
No, the town manager summarized it extremely well.
Thank you. Any questions directed to town manager or town attorney? Seeing none, are there any questions? I'll invite the public to participate if you'd like on this item. Do you have any questions or comments about the, the item? Nobody's clamoring to get to the podium on this one, okay? So is there action to be had by the council?
I will make a motion that we pass ordinance number four one two dash thirteen.
Hold on, just a second.
It's an introduction and waive the reading?
Oh.
Okay, just a second. That's okay.
It's okay?
Yeah.
So I make a motion that we introduce it and waive the reading of ordinance number four one two dash thirteen. An ordinance of the town council of the town of Yountville amending section three point three two point three one zero Uniform Construction Cost Accounting Procedures of Article Three of Chapter Three Point Three Two of Title Three, Finance and Revenue of the Town of Yountville's Municipal Code by Adopting New Bid Amount Limits for Public Work Projects.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. We are going to move on now to our next item, which is consideration of a business development trip to Beijing, China. And I think I'll go ahead and take the lead on, on this. Just to give, we gave a brief introduction at our last, oh yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Mayor. Sorry, that's right. Town attorney?
Oh, it's just Steve. Oh, yeah. Yeah. So subsequent to hearing of this matter at the last council meeting, it was brought to my attention that the local participant to this project has contacted the principals of Cliff Lady, my employer, regarding possible engagement in this project. While the foreseeable impact by Cliff Lady is not significant enough to potentially trigger disqualification of my participation under the regulations of the FPPC, I nevertheless will be recusing myself from participating in this matter due to the appearance of potential conflict. I'll therefore be stepping down at this time.
Thank you. Okay. As I was saying, I was approached by a local winery owner and was told about an opportunity that the town of Yountville has to participate in a business development project with the ministry, sorry, lost my word there, Ministry of Commerce in China. And what's happening is that the Ministry of Commerce of the People's Republic of China has developed an International Brand Management Center, China Association of International Trade Program, where they're going to be importing goods and services primarily from the United States and from Europe. And the government has recognized the need to protect the brand integrity and expand existing business relationships of the products that they have coming into their country. And the brand management centers are being created in cities throughout China to do that. And they are going to be overseen principally by the Ministry of Commerce. And the International Brand Management Center has entered a business agreement with Yountville Based Trans-Pacific Procurement LLC to distribute Napa Valley wines and Napa Valley wine-related brands in these centers. The TPP would serve as the exclusive U.S. partner coordinating sales to China. And the plan would be to promote and sell a variety of Yountville Appellation and Napa Valley brands. In China, the brand management center would be named the Yountville American Products Purchasing Center and will include exhibits of a variety of Napa Valley products and displays promoting business and tourism in Yountville and the broader Napa Valley. The TPP is establishing an office for the IBMC, sorry about all the acronyms here, operating in Yountville, where it would coordinate purchasing and host official delegations of Chinese government and business officials, as well as media, consultants, buyers, and others. And a key component of the Chinese business culture is establishing personal relationships with future economic partners, including both government and business leaders. In order to establish these relationships, the Ministry of Commerce has invited me as the mayor of Yountville in a formal capacity to Beijing for trade development meetings and to, and for launch ceremonies next week, starting April eighth through the thirteenth. A similar invitation has been sent to Governor Jerry Brown, who is traveling to Beijing over that period and beyond on a state trade and investor mission to participate in the, he's been invited to participate in those same launch ceremonies. And since this staff report was written, an invitation was sent from the Ministry of Commerce to this local travel party that may include myself to attend the governor's formal luncheon at which he'll be speaking and presenting his plans for the state of California to engage in this business relationship in China. A Chinese trade delegation is already scheduled to travel from China to Yountville in May in order that the Chinese government and business dignitaries basically can do the same thing that they're proposing here, which is visit the brand management center location here in Yountville. And China's ambassador to the United States, Zhang Yeizhou, I don't know if I'm doing that any justice, is among those invited to attend those ceremonies. Specific benefits to the town of Yountville include significant brand and destination exposure for Yountville as a travel destination and identification of the Yountville Appellation as a leader in the production and sale of premium U.S. wines. The other anticipated benefit is to expanded export opportunities throughout the China market for Yountville wines and related products and other Napa Valley market for Yaunville wines and related products and other Napa Valley businesses. And the original, because this has been an extremely fluid situation, not only since we had this meeting a couple weeks ago, or I presented this concept a couple weeks ago, but since then, I've received word that the, because the Ministry of Commerce and the Brand Management Center is, has made the formal invitation to me and is hosting the events, that they would be able to cover all costs for my travel. Whereas in this resolution, you'll see that there is a request to cover travel expenses not to exceed $3,000. The reason the if necessary was in there is for this development, that it's been determined, and I verified with the Fair Political Practices Commission, that I could accept payment from the Ministry of Commerce for such an official trade travel mission. So that's generally the presentation. There are more details that we can discuss in the resolution. Among the activities that they are planning would be a signing ceremony for a memorandum of understanding that would be principally ceremonial. What typically happens in the Chinese business culture is, as I stated, meeting some of the specific players, both private business and government officials, and then basically agreeing in principle that we'll formally make an effort to participate, or informally make an effort to participate in this type of business development. So there's no specific financial commitment by the Town of Yaunville. There's no business commitment related to the Town of Yaunville. So with that staff report, are there any specific questions from council before we have further discussion? Councilmember Dornbecker?
I'm sorry, will you repeat what you just said? We'll have no specific agreements with this organization?
Yes, the Town of Yaunville does not enter into any concrete business relationships with the brand management centers. What my role would be is a ceremonial role, basically telling the business folks in China and government officials in China that we recognize the opportunities for this business development here in Yaunville and are willing to collaborate on how to best serve their needs as well as our needs. But there are no, there are no specific legally binding commitments. There's no business threshold of partners or anything, no details like that.
And one last question, and this is just a sort of an administrative thing, because I understand in looking at the fiscal impact for the not to exceed $3,000, it seems like the, where it's taken from in the budget, to me, it's sort of a promotional cost. So I don't know whether that's, it's not a big deal. I just noticed that and thought, rather than take it from the training budget, but you know, that really is neither here nor there.
And I believe that's just the, basically the label that we have given that category in the funding. And the expectation would be, if any expenses at all, they'd be incidental expenses, but the travel, hotel accommodations, all those types of expenses will be covered by the Ministry of Commerce.
Thank you.
Questions?
Yes, so are you saying that this contract or MOU is the...
It's not a contract.
Well, this MOU, which, well, I can talk about later, you will not be signing that?
No, that's not what I said. There would be a ceremony of signing the memorandum of understanding, both there in Beijing and then potentially back here in May when Chinese officials would visit here.
Okay.
No other questions at this time?
Nope.
Okay. So I'll invite the public. I suspect that some folks are here on this item, so if there's anyone that would like to speak to this item, now would be the time. If you have any comments, please come on up. Welcome, again.
I actually, Carly Rife, I actually didn't come to speak on this, but I have a couple of comments, having heard this. John, I don't begrudge you this trip at all, and I don't begrudge anyone the $3,000. That's really not a lot of money. However, when I think about what I just said about the poor people of Yaunville and not being able to pay $4 for a swimming pool fee, et cetera, and then I hear the Town of Yaunville being engaged, the notes I could take, international commerce and relations, official delegations for future economic partnerships with government and business, significant brand and export recognition. It just seems, again, this is, we're pushing business, we're pushing these kinds of things so we can take more money in, but not spend the money out on the people. And I think that this is really more of a chamber or business kind of thing. For you to go as a ceremonial person, fine, and probably so it looked really clean on their dollar and not on our dollar, because it really isn't a very big dollar. But it just seems that we're a little tiny rural town in the Napa Valley. We're not an internationally recognized, whatever, to be having international relations with China. That's my comments.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other comments, please?
My name's Craig Camp. This has kind of evolved since we were here two weeks ago. We've learned a lot more. The main thing, this whole process started by us researching and doing business in China, and it expanded beyond the capability of my company and even the interest I have to grow beyond that point. And we see a great potential for Yaunville, as Councilmember Hall mentioned. We have invited every, basically every winery in the Yaunville area to participate in this project at no, with no cost, no fees. The only thing we have to do is supply a few samples. But I would say that actually Yaunville is a famous international center. We're certainly a famous international center for food and wine, and known throughout the world, and that's why there's the interest by China in this project, because of the fame that has developed here over many years. And we wish to build that in Yaunville. I am a resident, and I have, I think, a great long-term interest in the development of this area.
Thank you. Yes.
Mayor, council members.
Barbara Allen, 1876 Heritage Way. I wish all the council members would take a trip to China. That's where I grew up. It's certainly different now, but we should all go because it's changing. And it is beneficial for Yaunville to be exposed and help the business. We all help the business. We all benefit, we all do well. I think for me, I have difficulty understanding that for the town and the staff getting involved in, should be a private sector business, getting involved, the town is providing support primarily for a local winery group, Cornerstone Cellars, and it obviously puts disadvantage of other wineries in this area, in this town. Our town management is in boil and in exercise of picking winners and losers among local wineries that Cornerstone picked to promote. On their website, they have already selected six to eight products to promote on their trip. Who are they? Who are the chosen few? So I think for me, I don't understand why the town should be planning a trip, involved in this business. These businesses are activities for a private entity who are risking their own money, and we shouldn't be risking taxpayer dollar for them to pick winner-loser of our business in this town. But after saying that, if the town can somehow do a fundraiser, have all the members, council member to go on the trip, I'll attend and donate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, can we note that the vice mayor has joined the meeting at this time?
So that's who that is. Hello, Vice Mayor.
Hi.
Yes.
I have a couple short comments. One thing I always ask to myself...
Sir, sir, could I get your name, please, for the record?
Oh, pardon me. My name is William Hanson.
Thank you, sir.
I live in Napa, or in, pardon me, in Dean, Napa, the...
Rancho de Napa.
Thank you.
I always ask myself what the benefits would be to me as a taxpayer, and I've had a hard time coming up with that. Now, it may be a lot of benefit to our Chamber of Commerce or our growers and our wine producers, but me personally and other taxpayers who would have, and I got here thinking that it was going to cost me money, because 3,000 bucks and 300, it was going to cost me $10 to send them over to China. So that was my initial comment. I just wondered if Yaunville's going to start growing grapes and sending them to China. Maybe we should have a Yaunville vineyard. Today, my wife went to the funeral of James Barrett, and he was celebrated, and he, along with Monarski and Mondavi and other wine producers, the wine producers are the people that put Napa on the map. It wasn't the mayor of Calistoga, the mayor of St. Helena, or other mayors that did it. It was the growers and the wine producers. Let's see. And as I said, it's all our money, and I'm with that lady back here. I would go further, and I hate to get into this, but the 210 grand we give to the, every year, what's that, the...
Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce. That's about 70 bucks per person, and I would think we could do better for our people. Chamber doesn't even invite us to a free wine now and then. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public like to speak on this item?
Steve Combs, 1867 Heritage Way. Thank you for addressing one of my concerns about the money, okay? I have another concern, and it's this MOU, this memorandum of understanding. John, you say it's not a contract. Margie, you suggested that maybe it was. It's a document that's signed. So there are some requirements that will be put upon the town, I mean, by agreement. That's what agreements are all about. But it concerns me if the town itself is going to get involved and involve itself in international trade and matters of business that it would seem to me would be more appropriately handled in the private sector. You know, this council historically has been responsible for matters within the town structure, clean safe parks, passable roads, lighted streets, a functioning sewer system, et cetera. This proposal, it seems to me, kind of expands the mission of the council. These are uncharted waters, and I'm not sure that, well, I will suggest, I think there should be a discussion about that. How broad is, are the council's sphere of operation, if you will? And I'd like for you to consider that. And I am concerned about the MOU when you read a document and it says the town will do the following, and then you sign it. To me, those are things that go into courts of law and get to be bandied back and forth by attorneys, and that's just my observation on that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I hope you were able to read the, were you able to read the memorandum of understanding to understand what the issues are that would be agreed to?
Yeah, and you know what? Very, very general. That's a very general memorandum. My concern is this. Over the years, I've met many people who've done business in foreign trade, and I had a neighbor next door, God rest his soul, 20 years, sold grapes and plums to the Chinese marketplace, to a man and woman. They have always said, you know, Steve, China's a different culture, it's a different language. We see something in writing and we interpret it one way, they interpret it another way. You really need to make sure everybody understands what you're talking about, you're on the same playing field. And what looks like a very simple, non-committal, what's the word that I want to use here? A very simple document that we understand may be interpreted totally differently on the other side of the pond, and that's a potential problem. And I think it's something that we ought to have well ironed out, perhaps somebody in the legal profession who's schooled in Chinese law might be appropriate to have him review that MOU before we sign it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll be inviting our town attorney to address that, because he has reviewed it and has had legal professionals reviewing the MOU, and he'll be able to speak to the legal implications, if there are any. We definitely need to get the order of height straightened out here in terms of who's coming to speak. Welcome.
Renata Halliday, 1893 Mulberry Street. I agree with the other speakers. I think this should be a private matter. I can give you 127 reasons why it should not be a municipal agreement with the country of China, but I will spare you the long list.
If you could just raise that mic from back up, that way. There we go.
I'm Everett Gooch.
Actually, I'm sorry, if you could just keep it closer to you, because the folks that aren't here, that are listening, all around the world, by the way.
I was going to speak only to business, but I feel compelled to start by saying that I support the long-term residents of the city of Yaun, or the Town of Yaunville. I agree with the things that have been said, and I feel for some of the comments that have been made this evening. So I don't want to overlook the importance of the town residents in the comments that I'm going to say. I support the businesses of Yaunville and all the businesses of the Napa Valley, and I want them all to be successful. I congratulate Trans-Pacific Procurements in establishing a new business and for obtaining an exclusive contract with the International Brand Management Center of China, and I welcome new private businesses, and I wish them a great deal of success. I do not believe that it is necessary or wise, though, for the Town of Yaunville to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the International Brand Management Center of China, or appropriate resources for the use there. Now, I understand that perhaps you're not doing that, but I think also, though, with delegations coming here, and if there is an MOU in process, in the standing, that it probably will take town resources for meetings. I mean, we found out that it costs to have meetings in our buildings and what it costs. So unless those are going to be covered by private enterprises, the Town of Yaunville probably does need to appropriate at some point in time some... some dollars for this process. But, when the center has an exclusive arrangement with a private local business, I do not believe that it's appropriate for an MOU to be signed. The Napa Valley Vintners Association assists in the distribution channels, and Napa Valley Tourism District assists with enhancing tourism to the Napa Valley. So, I'm not sure why there needs to be another organization if it's going to have preferential treatment through government entities on this end and that end. By signing this MOU with the China Center, it seems like it's favoring a relationship with a private company that has an exclusive contract, and it does not give a good message about the town of Yountville providing a fair and equal basis for all businesses in the valley. Complete and thoughtful consideration needs to be given to the far-reaching policy implications of signing this MOU and appropriating any possible funds in the future. It should not be considered only in this singular circumstance. I would ask the council to consider what it would do if on July 1, there was an invitation to travel on July 15, and to sign an MOU with a government agency in Australia, or any other country where there is a wine industry, and to consider what this MOU might give an advantage of one business over another. There is no deal that is so good that it can't be walked away from if there is not time allowed for an informed and contemplative decision. And I think it would be prudent to slow down and to make the final decision in full context, and not to make a hasty precedent-setting decision based upon a flattering invitation and a schedule that has been set by someone else. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public like to speak? Let's have the taller gentleman first, and then we'll lower the microphone to the show. No, really, whichever one of you would like to go first.
My name is Joe Bollock. I live at 1875 Heritage Way, lived here for 20 years. First, I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council and their staff for the wonderful job they're doing here in Yountville. I just got one question about, has the Chamber of Commerce been considered in this? What is their role in this? That's what we hire them for, isn't it, to do business like this?
Yeah, I'll address your questions after your comments, and then we'll be able to respond, as opposed to having a straight dialogue.
That's my only comment, about Chamber of Commerce.
Okay. So, the chamber represents a variety of businesses here in Yountville. A member of that chamber was contacted by the Chinese, the International Brand Management Development Center, and a relationship was built there. I can't speak to the executive director's involvement in any of that, but I don't know if Mr. Camp is able to speak directly to that or not. But certainly, the Chamber of Commerce is in a position to support all the businesses in Yountville, at least the member businesses in Yountville, yes.
They wouldn't be concerned on this international thing, or anything, any other type of...
Absolutely, they'll be part of the conversation moving forward, I'm sure, as we're looking at businesses participating in this development process. But, what I was going to be getting into when we have dialogue with the council is, we have to recognize that this is the business culture and process for Chinese economic development, and they do value the partnerships, both with business and local government officials. And so, that is a new component of the process for Yountville. It's not new, the state of California's governor is going to do the very thing that we're talking about here on a local level. He's going there with other staff and administrators and business leaders to discuss much more formally than we are, business opportunities to benefit the entire state. This is one component of that, primarily the wine industry.
I think, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Bob Sutton, 154 Vineyard Circle. I moved here from Philadelphia area, I've been here for 16 years now. I love it here. When I was walking up, a question jumped into my mind from my civics classes. Doesn't the Constitution say something about private alliances with foreign governments?
Is that...
That's a question.
Are there any other comments you'd like to make before...
Well, I'm a free enterprise person, a free market person, and I think this should be done with, through businesses rather than with the government of Yountville.
Thank you. What I'd respond to that is that we're not entering into any business agreements with any businesses specifically in China. This is a symbolic governmental business.
I thought I heard, though, this was part of the government, of the people's.
Correct. And if you, maybe you haven't had a chance to actually read the language that's in the memorandum, but it is basically stating that we agree to be cooperative in the efforts that our local business community has. It's a part of the ceremony of doing business development through China, and we're just recognizing that process.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to speak to the item before we return it for council discussion? Seeing no one else, I'll return for discussion and possible action. Vice Mayor?
I just want everybody to know why I walked in and why I look like I do tonight. I just got off a 13-hour flight from Taipei, Taiwan, which has nothing to do with this item, is purely coincidental, but was in Malaysia and Taiwan with my kids for an extended spring break. So, I apologize for being late, and I have a feeling that some of my questions, when we get to them, will be redundant from earlier questions, but if they can be indulged when we get to that point, I'd appreciate it.
If you'd like to start, we can start now.
Well, I guess some of my questions, I know Craig, you're here, and some other folks, and I've heard the comments that people have said since I've been here. One of the things that I've gone through and asked myself is, does this involve cornerstone in one business in Yountville? Is this a Yountville-wide, Napa Valley-wide issue? How is this working?
So, I'll review, because I guess you did come in just after I reviewed the staff report.
Yes.
And went through that specifically. First of all, the development that's not included in the staff report is that my travel expenses would be covered by the Ministry of Commerce in China, so the not to exceed 3,000 is not really a viable concern any longer. That was included because, at the time the staff report was written, that result hadn't presented itself. The trans-Pacific procurement company is in a business relationship with the Chinese Brand Management Center, and they are acting as a, what I'm calling a business development portal, and they are engaging multiple brands throughout, not only the Alphal Appalachian, but throughout the Napa Valley to participate in this. It's not meant for any single business to receive exclusive benefit, or else I would agree that involving the town would not be appropriate. What this does is involves a town in outreach to a tourism market and business market that is substantial, is being recognized throughout the valley. If folks read the Napa Register the other day, there was a story about another local winery businessperson who is establishing relationships very similar to this in China, and they're establishing flower garden centers. So, this is happening, and I also have reached out to the Napa Valley Vintners Association, who have made multiple trips to China. They are making another trip to China later in April. They do take vintners over for more traditional US version of wine business development, which is bringing vintners over, doing tastings, providing some product, and then coming home. This is a different concept. It is representing the Chinese culture of engaging both business leaders and then symbolically, the government officials that correspond to those business communities. So, that's very broadly paraphrasing the staff report. There are a couple of other developments, one being, as I stated, the travel expenses would be covered by the Ministry of Commerce, and we, this group has been invited to not only participate in the luncheon that's being held by the governor, and show support for the governor's efforts on a broader state level, but also, he has been invited to attend the ceremony that would be held for this wine industry-specific effort.
That was one question, and I marked off five questions in that.
There you go, that's what I get for a long answer.
The question did come up, and it was a question I had about the Yountville Chamber of Commerce, and I know you were looking at Craig on that. Has, you kind of mentioned that Yountville is, Chamber of Commerce looks at the broad business community. Is this something that does not fit within the Chamber of Commerce for some reason?
I'll just speak to that, then I, I'll explain the reason I can't speak to it is because I have not been a part of any of those specific business discussions. I've intentionally stayed away from that, and so if Mr. Camp has some insight into the chamber...
We've invited the chamber several times to make presentations to groups when they visited on Yountville, and we expect them to be fully engaged in the visit here in May. The invitation to the mayor was something that the center did on their own. This is not something that we were involved in or asked them to do. This is, I think, a very formal process in Chinese relations, is these personal bonds and relationships, meeting each other, going back and forth to establish an ongoing interchange. I think what, if you look at the agreement, it's really just saying that they want to know when they come here, they will be welcomed and honored in the community.
I think if I could ask the town attorney maybe to, there's some question about the level of commitment, even though the Memorandum of Understanding, as it's written, is very vague and non-committal, if you could address the legal implications of signing an MOU.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the town council. I'd like to try and break this down into a couple of discussions, one of which, what is a Memorandum of Understanding in general? Then turn to the language that's contained within the Memorandum of Understanding that's before you this evening. And then thirdly, is the component of the resolution that's presented to you, and a reaffirmation of the fact that there is no, that there's, if you move forward with this Memorandum of Understanding, there is not an intent or intention of the town to expend any dollars, any staff resources, without other action by the town council. Let me start with the first point, which is, you know, an MOU is fundamentally an agreement that the parties enter into without much definition. It's very nature, it is intended to be ambiguous. Many times, parties, you know, instead of just going on a handshake, there are some terms that are set forth on paper merely to identify or define expressions of intent. So, it's in the hierarchy of legal documents, it's certainly at the bottom level, the bottom rung of those documents. If a party, one party or the other, attempts to enforce the terms of the agreement or the validity of that agreement, it really wouldn't go far in a court of law. Moving on, then, to this specific language and this memorandum, and if you, you know, if we take the time, and I don't know how much the town council wishes me to go paragraph by paragraph, but it's before you this evening, it's before the public, but I do want to highlight the fact that, at most, it merely is an expression of intention to cooperate, to focus in on Napa Valley products, and to agree that there's a desire to expand the Napa and Yountville Appalachian and product to a new market, or to an existing market, but beyond what's there currently. If you look to paragraph three of this MOU, where it says, Beijing International Brand Management Center will assess the recommendation of Napa Valley brands, including but not limited to Yountville-based businesses and Yountville Appalachian member brands, and provide comprehensive services to introduce and promote those businesses. It's really a burden on the Beijing International Brand Management Center. It's not a burden upon the town of Yountville, or any operator of any winery within Napa Valley, or the town of Yountville. So, it really is an expression by the Beijing International Brand Management Center to attempt to expand the marketability and the horizons of Yountville product and Napa Valley product in China. If you look at paragraph four, it provides that a working group shall be established to discuss, not bind, but to discuss the implementations of the activities to be undertaken. The scope of work for the working group shall include but not be limited to this criteria for selection of products, the promotion of wine and related products, to, including free exhibition, distribution, development, and promotion, procedure and products participating in global purchasing season, assist in the organizing and purchasing visits by China Buyers Group to Yountville. So, these are all, it doesn't say, it says assist. It doesn't say you must spend X amount of dollars. It doesn't say the town of Yountville must house and feed and take individuals who come from China around. It says assist. Now, assist doesn't have any definition, I grant you that, but it doesn't also put any burden or responsibility. So, if you look at the language of this MOU, again, it is very, on the rung of legal documents, it has very little binding, actually, very little to no binding obligations on the town. Then if we look to the resolution that's before you, and it was an amendment that was recommended by the town manager, myself, to the town council, which provides language, let me pull that up if I may real quick, that specifically outlines the commitment.
Page five.
Yes, there it is. And it, further in paragraph six of the resolution, it says, no other town... Well, initially, that was when we were anticipating the expenditure of three, not, an amount not to exceed $3,000 from the town council travel and training budget. Paragraph six clearly states, no other town financial commitment or expenditure or utilization of staff resources shall be made without the prior authority of the town council. So, it was intending, this resolution, if it's adopted, of course, with the edit of taking out paragraph five, it's clear the town is telling the world that the town is not intending to provide any other financial commitment or expenditure or utilization of staff resources without the prior approval of the town council. So, that is a quick summary of the implications of this MOU. It is nothing more than an expression of willingness to cooperate without any financial or further obligation on the part of the town.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
So, I guess the questions that I primarily have left do have to do with the MOU, and one of which is that I don't see any, shall we call it, ability to terminate, a termination clause, or, you know. I think the concern that was raised that had to do with what we believe something says and what somebody else believes something says is one of my, one of my major concerns, where it says, you know, I think in here it says that we will facilitate, I'm sorry.
Are you talking about under the work group, the system?
Isn't there an office or something?
Oh, the creation of a... Oh, the creation of a...
Well, I guess it says, for example, both parties, number one, both parties shall jointly facilitate promotions of Napa Valley products in China, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. My, my thought process on this is, I am no expert on China, let me state that right off the bat, but the intertwining of business and government, there is no separation in China. I shouldn't say no, but there's very little separation. So for the statement of these business things are going to happen, and we've signed this as the town of Yanfil, the government, do we, do we have a reason to believe that they see it the way we say it? In terms of what these, what these things would mean to them, you know, you sit down and have a negotiation with somebody, you make sure everybody understands what both sides agree on, and that's not possible in this case, which I understand. But when I look at the idea of a work group shall be established, who's in the work group, a criteria for selection of products, is that the town of Yanfil and the Chinese government? I don't understand how that works. And so I'm trying to, in my mind, intertwine, take out the business piece from the government piece and say, this is what we are saying we will do, and what in their mind, if we're facilitating something, well, if there's a permit problem, that's not facilitating it. We said we're going to facilitate an office to happen, and now you're telling me that there's a zoning problem? I don't understand. And I'm, I'm just giving an example and making that up, but I guess that's, that's my concern when I go through and look on this, and I don't know if you have any response to that. That may be more philosophical than legal.
I do have, I do have a response that hopefully is a little bit more than just philosophical, but it, I would agree that the nature of operations in China are far different than what, how we operate here in the United States. The enforceability of a contract, if we were even going to say, well, a memorandum of understanding does have components of contract and contract law. If the International Brand Management Center was looking to try and enforce this document here against the town, it would have to step into the courts of the United States. And in the courts of the United States, this is probably as enforceable as, I don't know, paper it's written on, the wind, so...
Philosophical now, I think.
Yeah, now I'm getting philosophical. But you raise a good point in terms of the termination provisions. Can the, can there be a provision that says the town has the right with, you know, 10 days, 30 days notice to, to wipe this clean? That would be, that certainly would not be out of, out of, out of the question to include language like that. But this is, if this was, if this was a memorandum of understanding in the United States between the United, between two parties in the United States who've been viewed as nothing more than a feel-good type of document, that's how we would view it under your, under US law, international law that's applied in the United States. Now, I would grant you, I'm not, I'm not a international Chinese legal expert. I've had some familiarity with dealing with individuals who are very interested in the activities in Napa Valley because of private clients that we have. And they, there is, I'm sure the council is well aware, there is a great deal of interest by having, in the Chinese business realm of having connections in Napa Valley because it, you know, it's the best place for wines. And, and the Chinese government and the Chinese business environment is such that they are attempting to connect and identify themselves with Napa-based product. And I think that's what you're really looking at as you're looking at this MOU.
I don't have any questions for right now.
Okay. Other questions specifically, Councilmember Mueller?
Yes, along those lines. So this MOU, when I read it, neither provides rights or obligations, it's actually silent on whether it's international law, Chinese law, or US law. So we have to assume it would be totally up in the air. So you said you've got, you know, some experience with Chinese law, so I would assume, maybe you could help explain to us, as you well know, that China's a civil law country and the US is a common law country. So if something was adjudicated over there, what would that mean? And how would they do that versus how we do that?
Well, they may view it differently. Enforceability is the issue. If, I'll try and draw this analogy, and it may be fall short of what we're discussing, but if you take the lob between two different states, the law...
Well, it's just like China and Yanfil.
Well, let me try at least this first explanation, then I'll draw it to China and, and here in the United States. The question really would be is, what are you attempting to enforce? If you're attempting to enforce the, an obligation to expend money, there is no obligation in this memorandum of understanding to expend any money. That would also be supported by the resolution, if the council adopts the resolution as crafted with some amendments. If the Chinese government, let's even assume far-fetched, that the Chinese government says, well, we want to enforce this against the town of Yanfil, and we're going to haul all of the council members over to China and dig into your pockets. The question would be is, what are you digging for? And there is, other than the expression of cooperation, there isn't much more than It's far different than if, if a business enterprise, which, yes, the town is a business enterprise, says, we are going to commit to you, you know, 100 cases of wine to be delivered for promotion in, in China, that's a little bit different. Again, if you look paragraph by paragraph of what we have before us, it's, you look at the words of facilitate, support, assess, the operative word of discuss, you know, again, back to paragraph five, support. Granted, those are, those are unenforceable terms under, under United States law, maybe in China as a common law country.
Civil law.
That may mean something, but it would be hard pressed to say what, what that means.
Well, on that subject, who translated from Chinese to English? And how did it, how, the, the MOU that we received under council comments two weeks ago versus the language that's in our packet, there seems to be very significant changes. So who, who translated it from the Chinese? Because I think it, you know, comes to council member Lewis's point, and certainly a concern for me. As we know, there's certain words that don't even translate, so you really need somebody very adept in this to do that. And who made all those changes between the first version and the second version?
I'll speak to that, if I may, because I made those changes. The original documents, the invitations to myself and to Governor Brown, the original memorandum of understanding were all sent directly from the Ministry of Commerce. They were in both Chinese, in Mandarin and in English. And at the bottom of them, it does state that, and I don't have it right here in front of me, but basically it said, oh, at the very end, memorandum of understanding enters into force in both Chinese and English languages, and both versions are of equal standing. So if your concern is that you don't believe that what we're signing is what they, their version in Mandarin says, it's, it specifies right there. The reason I made modifications, and they have been accepted by the Chinese officials that, that have invited me, was to recognize the desire to have a, a very clearly defined broad benefit to the town's participation. And nowhere did it state originally specifics about the Yanfil Appellation wine members or the Napa Valley wines and other wine-related products. I added that because I wanted to make sure that there was a broad base of, of benefit both for the town of Yanfil and the Napa Valley as a whole, because I see this as a great economic opportunity. Others are responding to that opportunity right now, not only in the private wine sector, but the Napa Valley vintners have recognized that with multiple trips to China, both into Beijing and Shanghai, and they recognize the, specifically in conversations I had since this has come up, they've recognized that the Chinese government, government has finally made strides in the right direction to protect Napa Valley brands. If I remember correctly, the Napa Valley vintners receive the only brand protection in, in the world for Napa Valley wines from the Chinese government. So this is all in recognition of the need to protect the brands that are coming from the US to China that have had, you know, excessive fraud and counterfeiting. You wouldn't necessarily know if a bottle left the Napa Valley, what was in that bottle or what label was on that bottle when it got to, to a store in China. And so the Ministry of Commerce is recognizing that, and, and this is what they've come up with, with a way to protect our interests and our brands.
So when you made the changes in English, you sent it to China and they made the appropriate changes in Chinese?
Correct. They, they signed off on the changes, said they were comfortable with those wording changes. I think they recognize the fact that this is, again, a principally ceremonial document. It's not a, a hard and fast business contract that's committing us to anything financial other than a, a spirit of cooperation. This is actually council discussion at this point. Did you have any other questions of town, or town attorney, or?
So we have not really had a, an expert who knows Chinese and English review the English version and the Chinese version, who also is an expert in trade.
To my knowledge, there, we, I did not employ anyone here in the United States to verify the, the Chinese document, but it does state here that both English and Chinese versions are of equal standing.
So...
I can't speak for what they've done to verify at the Ministry of Commerce.
So I guess another question for the town attorney, in terms of the severability or the, the expiration clause, there doesn't seem to be anything like that in there, or even how, you know, if something goes south, either party can discontinue from this contract.
Well, going back to the question, if such language is desired by the town council, that's quite simple. I can recite language that would say, this memorandum of understanding is in full force and effect unless either party notifies the other party with 30 days' written notice, upon which time the MOU shall terminate, no further obligation shall be burdened upon either, either party. The, and, if it was a full-blown binding agreement, you'd have those types of terms in there. That would make it look more like a binding contract. A memorandum of understanding by its nature is, it's not even to the level of, of an exclusive negotiating agreement, a letter of, or sort of in the lower level of the, of a letter of interest. Normally when you have some type of negotiating agreement, contract, you do have a termination provision, because then you know the negotiations are over. This, this is, as I indicated on the, on this pyramid of legal documents, it is at the very lowest level. But if, if the town council wishes to see, you know, make it look more like a binding agreement with termination provisions and, you know, all the other bells and whistles that we would put into a, a legal document, we are most happy to do so.
So that's also true under civil law in China, is what you're saying?
Well, as I indicated previously, I'm, I'm not an expert in, in Chinese law. You know, it, the enforceability of such a memorandum of understanding in order to be, in order to be imposed upon the town of Yanfil would have to be enforced in, in a federal court in California. If there are disputes between parties and you look to where the enforceability of that, of a contract, you must look to the jurisdiction in which you are attempting to enforce that contract. If you sue someone in, who you've done business with, who lives in New Jersey, you can sue in federal court, but you'd have to sue in New Jersey. And the law that would apply, of course, it's differently, different in, in federal jurisdictions, the law of, the federal law would, would govern. There may be situations where, you know, if you are suing, this goes way back to my civil procedure in law school days, but you, you must sue in the jurisdiction in which you intend to enforce the terms of the contract. So here, if, if the International Brand Management Center wishes to sue the town of Yanfil, they'd have to step into our soil to do so, to enforce it at least.
Are there any other new issues to be brought forward?
Yes, please.
Yes, Councilmember Dornbecker?
My major difficulty is in the participation of town on behalf of a small group or an individual business. I think that the perception, just the perception of that, is very damaging to the town, and I think that the only way that I could agree is if all of the wineries in the Yanfil Appellation and, and in town and all the businesses have equal representation by way of brochures or whatever it is, but that, that it be equally representative of all of the businesses in town.
So the, the process is, because this is a brand-new venture, they're starting with a smaller number, they can't start with 480-some Napa Valley wineries and...
I'm only talking about Yanfil.
Right. And so they're starting with a manageable number with the expectation of expanding not only the Yanfil Appellation, but beyond that. Now, not all Yanfil Appellation wineries can participate because of the, the amount of product they make. They may not even have an interest in, in selling to China because they're already selling out domestically or wherever else they're selling. But there's every intention of having opportunity for those that want to, to participate. Now, the, there is cooperation that needs to be reached by the industry in China. Basically, China also has to agree that there are brands they can market and sell. So there may be an interest, just like in any business in the US, there may be an interest to sell in all markets, but not all products get sold in all markets. So there would be an effort made to represent, but there, there's no guarantee that every single winery in the Appellation or beyond the Appellation will be represented.
I realize that, but I think that as the mayor of the town of Yanfil, it's incumbent to represent all the businesses in the town of Yanfil to this organization and to the, this trade organization.
And that would...
International Brand Management Center, or whatever it is.
And that's exactly the reason that there would be additional visits, meetings, where their business community would come to Yanfil and meet the local business owners, the local winery owners, and engage in those relationships to expand on what's being marketed.
And I, I'm actually very in favor of trade delegations between countries. I think they open conversations. My older brother was the chief trade negotiator for the US government in Washington DC with Japan and China under the Reagan administration. And he went a long way in setting up the programs that exist. I agree with Councilmember Mueller that these documents should be looked at by an expert who reads Mandarin and who can actually translate them exactly as can be for us. I'm willing to ask my older brother if he could recommend someone locally, I'm sure they'd be...
We have, we have somebody here in the audience... We have, we have somebody here in the audience that could do that, if that would be...
That would be fine with me, but I believe that that should be done. And in number five in the memo, memorandum of understanding, it reads that the town of Yountville will assist in development of global purchasing office in Yountville, and I'd like that to be explained.
That's already happened, actually. If I understand that correctly, the purchasing office has already been established and they have a relationship, so we don't even, there is no participation necessary at this point for the town.
So that could be struck from the memorandum of understanding?
That last line, I think, probably could be, because there is no longer a need to assist. But I would not want to strike the entire item, because we want to support the sale of Yountville-based business products and the Yountville appellation member and other wineries.
What, how have the wineries, for example, Cornerstone, which I'm a big fan, but what other wineries, Yountville wineries, are sending either representatives or brochures or data or bottles of wine or whatever?
Well, I'll ask, do we have a list of specifically the first, if you could come up and speak into the microphone?
Hi. So far, formal invitations have gone to Heston, Hope &amp; Grace, Elise, Cliff Lady, Somersden, Goose Cross, Joseph Bell &amp; Hill, and that's only because that's all the addresses I have, but I'm sending it to everyone that has a business license in the area to sell wine, and they will be also invited to present in May.
Thank you.
Those are my questions. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, additional questions?
Who, this, Yountville-based Trans-Pacific Procurement LLP, who is that?
Okay, so if you could speak to that also?
Who is the company?
Who's behind that? Is that you or...
Myself.
Okay.
Dr. Mike Tregutsky, my partner in Cornerstone, and Wilson Chung, our partner in Beijing.
Okay. So you just kind of set up a separate entity outside of...
It's a totally separate business, right.
And then is that entity a profit-making entity? What's the purpose?
Well, we would obviously add a percentage on any sales made, but we are not charging any fees for presenting the wines, taking them to the centers, or facilitating meeting here and presentations in Yountville.
Okay.
The fees would be to the Chinese?
Well, we would have a percentage profit on wines that were actually sold, just like any other exporter.
But those fees, just so I'm clear in your question, those fees would be part of the importing, sale?
But there would be, there would be no fees, I mean, other words, you know, for these presentations.
The profit margin would be coming from the buyer.
Right, because obviously, we, well, the buyer, yes, would pay for it. The wineries would just sell to us, just like they would to any other distributor.
Yeah, so you're talking about markup?
Markup.
I sell to you for 100, you sell it for 110?
Correct.
To whatever, you know, something like that?
Right, right. I mean, obviously, we will have operational...
You would like more than, so you're telling me you would like more than 10%?
Right. Anyway, but that, we don't know yet. This is new.
Okay.
But we are not, as I said, we're not charging or have any fees for, and we're inviting everyone to participate.
Usually not fees to present and try to make that transaction happen?
Right.
Transaction fees, yes, but not, call it marketing fees, membership fees?
Correct. There are no membership fees or marketing fees or booth fees or any fees of any type.
Other questions, or is there further discussion?
Yeah, I do have more questions. I apologize. I need to go, I think that I'm most focused on the MOU at this point, and if I'm on page 15, item four, on the iPad version. I guess I have a question on this, maybe you can answer this, Mr. Mayor, the best. It says, "A work group shall be established, et cetera, et cetera." We have in the resolution that there's no use of town resources, so I'm assuming this work group is not town staff. Who is it?
It's TPP. It's potentially if I or any other council members wanted to volunteer time to receive dignitaries from China when they visit, for example, it would not be, there'd be no commitment, as was stated explicitly in the resolution, no additional resources, staff resources, which means people or funds unless authorized.
Want to change anything?
Okay.
But you're right.
Well, let me ask one more question. The use, I don't know if this is for you, Arnold, or this may be for you, the use of the concept of a memorandum of understanding, which I only understand it in a negotiating sense, usually of, you know, an exclusive negotiating window or confidentiality agreement while we work through terms, et cetera. Why the use of this as opposed to, you know, a proclamation of our love and adorment kind of a thing? Is this something that they want a contract as opposed to just an expression of support?
I don't know if you want to go with that or I do. I mean, this was sent as part of the package, the invitation and others, from the Ministry of Commerce. I can't speak to why they chose this type of document over another, but if our town attorney knows.
Mr. Mayor, members of the town council, I don't know either. Certainly, a resolution of support or a proclamation of endorsement of the activities could accomplish the same intent is what might be the expression of the town. Whether it comes in a memorandum of understanding, whether it comes in the form of a resolution or some proclamation, I don't know if there was any expression of a specific document by the International Brand Management Center or not. That's beyond my scope.
Okay.
Other questions, other comments?
So are we finished asking questions, or should we be making comments?
We can make comments if we're finished asking either factual or evaluation.
Okay, well, I'll kind of go back to the MOU too. I mean, you know, most people think, you know, I've just been living in Yountville and doing this for a while, but I actually had 30 years in corporate America and spent many, many years around a boardroom table getting trained in Japanese law, Chinese law for lots of contracts, and certainly heard lots of horror stories about, "I went over and signed an MOU, and now I'm ready for a contract," and, sorry, they're not, you just, Chinese say, "You just signed a contract." So I agree with Marita and her experience too. I think before any MOU would be signed, it's really imperative that we get, if we choose to even spend the money to do this, you know...
Or not spending any money.
Okay, then...
So let's just make sure that we stay on point.
I don't know how we would get, I, I wouldn't sign this unless I was able to talk to a lawyer who was versed in Mandarin in English, who was an expert in Chinese law, to tell me, you know, what am I really signing? What are really my obligations? I have a lot of questions I'd like to ask about what this means and what that means, and is it a literal translation in the Chinese form? Because to do that, you've got to sign both the English page and the Chinese page by page, and both people have to do it, so there is a lot of process there. So I just can't, you know, support signing that without really understanding and being able to ask questions about what we're really doing. It's just not outside of our expertise.
And this, so you don't have any experience with ceremonial signings? Yours is only in private business?
No, these are MOUs.
Right. In private business, business-to-business signings? Is that what you're, I'm just trying to make sure I understand if it's the same situation that you're describing.
In Chinese civil law, this is their common practice to do MOUs. In common law in the US, we typically do contracts. So I think by talking to this expert, we could all come to a real better understanding of these differences and what we'd really be entering into, asking questions and having somebody say, "Yeah, it's over here in the Chinese and the English," and really knowing what we're doing, you know, before we would just move ahead.
But I'm still, I'm just, I'm trying to be, make sure I understand your point, that you're saying that you've had a lot of experience in these MOUs, but have you had any experience when they've been signed as ceremonial with government officials in your business dealings, or has it only been in private business? Because there is a difference in interpretation. I think we've clearly defined that.
Well, that would be, we could certainly find that out from an expert too.
It's been, I think it's been pretty clearly stated here, but, okay, I just...
So that would be, I would really want to get an expert opinion before I said, "Let's sign this MOU."
Okay.
So, so you want more comments as well?
Now would be the time for all your comments.
Okay, so one of the things, and I certainly have heard a lot of the comments from the audience, not only on this matter, but there has been a consistency through the evening about, you know, how much more business do we really need in Yountville, you know, versus really balancing what's good for the public? So, and this whole item is so new and unique that I went and looked at our town council policies, and so it says, under section 4.2, that council members will work for the common good of the people of Yountville and not for any private or personal interest. So that's when I kind of went back and tried to really understand, what are we really doing here? We've had lots of discussions that we are going to be, that Trans-Pacific Procurement has signed an exclusive contract with the Chinese. There are many parts of this MOU that really talk about assisting with the office, assisting with their business, determining criteria for picking and losing winners in these wines. And again, I totally agree with Councilmember Dornbecker. I think that because this is the only company, and they've stated that they're going to be making money for sales, and this is a private company, that we are not being fair in supporting all the other businesses in Yountville. This is truly about a single business, and I think it's important, based on our town council policies about supporting all the business and not picking a private one, is that we really have to show equity and fairness to all of our businesses, and this singles out one. So I think that when we use public office or public funds, or maybe we're not going to use public funds for the private gain of a specific business, we're really kind of blurring the lines between our local government authority and private business matters. We have no jurisdiction, nor should we, over what Trans-Pacific Procurement does or doesn't do. That is outside of our local government. It is outside of our office as council members, and I don't think that should be changed at all. You know, the staff report says that this is how Chinese does business, signing these documents, but I think it goes more to a ceremonial thing, unless I really had time to do diligence and talk to an expert, that we are really endorsing and marketing products, and we're the government. And I don't like to blur those lines, because it really could diminish our equality with another business that came forward. I think there was an example, perhaps, that somebody else wanted us to go to Australia. So being fair and equal to everybody, setting this precedent, I think is premature. I would like for us to, since it's been such an interesting discussion, really take the time later on and really kind of even come up with some policies about what we want to do and what, and what we don't want to do. I think it would help us if anything else came up in the future. And again, I think it was some other good comments about, this just seems to me, it belongs with the Napa Valley Vintners, the Napa Tourism Business District, they're doing all of our promotion of our hotels and tourism. The Chamber, it just seems like there's so many trade organizations who are experts in this area, that for us then to muck around in those, it, I'm just really nervous about that, especially in light that we don't really have a policy.
Well, I couldn't disagree with you more about this representing a single entity. The Chamber of Commerce is, we all support, has a membership. It doesn't include all of the businesses in Yountville even, and we support all the businesses in Yountville. So for you to say that because one business might benefit, that means that we can't support all other businesses that would also benefit, I completely disagree with that assessment. We have specified, and I made quite clear in the language that we've read, both in the resolution and in the memorandum of understanding, that we're insisting on a broad base of benefit, not any single entity are we representing. So I'm not willing to sit here and let you make that claim that this is purely for the town of Yountville to benefit one single entity and that we're turning our backs on the other. As was stated in testimony tonight, all the members of, not only the Yountville appellation, but those in the Napa Valley are, in a broader sense, are being invited to participate. So this is a very common practice outside of Yountville. I absolutely acknowledge that this is something new to the town of Yountville, but I don't think that that's any reason to be afraid of it or be so kind of, you know, either introspective or small-minded about our potential here, that we say, "Well, you know, we don't have time to, you know, take the type of evaluation that you're saying that you would need to even reach a conclusion." There is a timeline that's being brought before us. So, you know, would it be nice to have additional time? Maybe, but, you know, the governor has set a schedule, and the business community in China is responding to a schedule they're on, so we are having to respond to that calendar. But to claim that we are turning our backs on the other businesses in the town, I strongly disagree with.
Well, let me respond. I respectfully disagree with that, because Trans-Pacific Procurement has an exclusive license. We all agree with that. That was in the staff report with this Ministry of Commerce Brand Management. They are outside of our government purview in terms of how they do their business.
As is the Chamber of Commerce, as is Visit Napa Valley, as is the Napa Valley Vintners Association, as is the Farm Bureau, as are the Grape Growers Association. Those are all private entities, not governmental agencies, but we do support their mission.
I totally agree with that, but this is a private business who has an exclusive license with China, and I maintain that we're not really going to get in and try to change whichever way they make a turn in terms of how they do business.
So how would it be different if the Chamber of Commerce or the Vintners Association was going with this trade group? You would change your mind if they said, "Oh, we agree that this is okay?" I'm not sure I understand why it would be different.
The only point I brought up about the Napa Valley Vintners, the Chamber of Commerce and the Napa Tourism District, is that they are trade organizations, the Napa Valley Vintners, the Chamber of Commerce and Napa Tourism, they are separate organizations that do things specifically related to tourism or promotion of wines. It's outside of our core responsibilities that we've always done here in terms of maintaining the streets and utilities and dealing, you know, with public service. Those are our core responsibilities, and this, it would really be broadening that, and I think I would...
Exactly. It would be broadening the core responsibilities, but it's not at the expense of those core responsibilities either.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying I would really like to have some time to really explore that and decide, do we even want to go in that direction, and what would be some of the parameters that we would choose to do?
Which is why I brought this forward two weeks ago, for you to consider that, and we've had this lengthy discussion tonight, so. Certainly would like to have other council comments. Councilmember Dornbecker?
I think it's unfortunate that the deadline is upon us to make this decision, because I think, you know, I, I understand the value of trade and reaching out to other countries, and I really would like to see how we could do this, but I don't think we're ready. And I especially do not think so in that every winery in the Yountville appellation has not been invited, and I see no demonstration of that. And I also agree that although we may have someone in this audience who can read Mandarin, I think that it would behoove us... in this audience who can read Mandarin, I think that it would behoove us to step very carefully by having some, some trade expert guide us along as we make this decision. The, the thing I'm concerned about is not the money at all, but our integrity as a town council. And I'm not, even though I love the idea of doing this, and I would love for you to be able to go, you could go without being, you know, go and represent us, but not in a formal situation where there's memo of understanding. And I also do have to say that I think that this does benefit the Trans-Pacific Procurement Company, and that also, you know, disturbs me that we, that we are sort of making that, making the town a legit, you know, legitimizing one company. So, I have a lot of, a lot of problems with it, and I'm so unhappy that the deadline is, is right now, because I know the, the time schedule's for next week. But if we could, you know, do some real work on this and learn about it, the next time we might be able to feel better about it.
Vice Mayor?
Well, if I go back and look at what my major concerns were when we started, out and out, number one was, is it an appropriate expenditure of town funds for a business purpose, which I think is what it is? And that, that question has been taken off. So, the ability of you or anyone to travel on, on behalf of the town or this organization is not a taxpayer issue at this point. So, I think that's a, to me, that was a critical piece of it. I think the, I think the next question comes down to, I was looking at the resolution. I guess I'm trying to figure out how to split the ceremonial piece of it, which I, I totally understand, of essentially, we have a private business that's coming and saying, "This would really be helpful for us. It will be helpful for us to sell Napa Valley products and Yountville products, et cetera. Can you help, help us, the government?" It's really not going to be anything off the skin of your back when it really comes down to it.
Just to clarify, because again, you may have missed it in the staff report, but the invitation came from the Ministry of Commerce, and their relationship was built through the TPP, so...
Well, okay, they, they invited us, but that was, I mean, that's the only reason they did that is because of these folks.
The TPP didn't even exist at that point, or it may have existed, but I wasn't aware of it.
Right.
Okay. Go ahead, sorry.
I understand. So, I think that, that question of, for us to go out and say, I mean, you know, we give proclamations to Philippe Jean-Ty or to Thomas Keller, whoever it was, for doing great business, et cetera, that makes total sense to me. And for us to say, "We support this," signing a contract, whether it's a contract or proclamation, I, I generally agree, it's, it's, it's very uncharted territory. And I was thinking when I was reading over this about benefiting a business, the city of Napa just did a tax-sharing deal with Todd Zepolsky and the Napa Town Center, where basically, sales tax is generated over the current amount, goes to that business, which is a profit-making entity, to do sidewalk repairs, et cetera. So, then we get in this question of, you have the city of Napa benefiting an individual profit-making enterprise. Is that appropriate or not? Well, that's, to me, that's exactly what we're dealing with here. And I, I guess the answer is, I don't know. My comfort level with it is, is difficult, and it's difficult particularly because of who's on the other side, no offense out there in the world, of, of signing this. It's a foreign government that I don't understand. So, I'm comfortable with being represented officially in the town on a ceremonial basis, on a proclamatory. I assume that, that your role to go there is to sign the deal. Is that correct?
Among other things, there is a signing ceremony. There's also a launching of this entire trade development program. What I don't know is if, if the Ministry of Commerce would be willing to, and I'm not even sure I could accept their invitation. I think I could. If we removed the whole MOU component and went in a ceremonial capacity, I'm not sure, does our town attorney know if, if that would kind of nullify the, the government-to-government relationship there?
Well, and if I can ask, add to your thought process, because that was initially my thought, is, okay, if, if we're not comfortable, we'll say the council says we don't want to sign the MOU. Does that mean everything's off the table, and, and these guys collapse, and everything, you know, there's no trip and all that kind of thing? Or, is that something that can be said, "Yes, we're very interested, and yes, we can put together something quickly that proclaims our interest, and then we could look further down the road"? And secondarily is, is that, I don't know if this question was, it was asked, I guess we're talking about town funds, how does it work for a foreign government to pay for an official trip or unofficial trip?
Well, like the governor's trip.
Yeah.
To China, for example.
Yeah. Is China paying for that?
Or the ambassador coming here.
I mean, is that a Form 700 problem, or?
No, I, well, just like what we would have is, there are provisions, I can't speak specifically for the Chinese structure, but there are provisions for official travel in budgets. We have official travel budgets.
Right.
When we go to league conferences. This would just be adding a ceremonial component to it.
So, I guess that would be my question, is at this point, based on what I've heard, is can we either delay or refine the ceremonial memorandum of understanding piece of it and not jeopardize the entire overarching goal?
Well, what I would say is, I don't know that. We would have to, we'd have to reach out to the Ministry of Commerce and the Brand Management Center to see if they would still, if there was still value in us representing the community that way. I guess a potential would be, if that's the interest of the council, to modify the resolution to exclude the MOU and leave whatever, whatever other elements remain, and then we'd have to find out. And if they say, "Thanks, but no, this has now been hollowed out so much that it, it doesn't satisfy our interest," then it would, it would die on the vine.
And I, I was thinking, if I'm looking here, even the resolution itself, which is certainly no contract, but it's a resolution of the town council, that some of the, some of the ceremonial statements about support and et cetera are in this A through D, maybe they could be added a little bit in there, so at least there's something to say, "Hey, our town council," if the town council was to agree to that, "did support."
Well, that would, that would be a potential action.
I'm trying to come up with options.
That would be a potential action to take, and then it could be that it just, it's, it's denied by the Chinese government, but that is a possibility. Town Attorney, do you have any?
Well, let me first address the issue of, of ability to travel. I have the FPPC guidelines and fact sheets for limitations on travel, and it does provide that, that the following travel payments are not subject to the GIF limit, which is $440, but may be reportable on a statement of economic interest, which is the Form 700. And it does provide travel not in connection with giving a speech, which, the connection to giving a speech is when you are specifically traveling or giving a speech. Participating in a panel or seminar or providing a similar service, but which is reasonably related to a legislative or governmental purpose, or to issue, to an issue of state, national, international public policy, and which is provided by a government, governmental agency, foreign government, or governmental authority. So, it is, it would be permitted for the mayor to travel if the, the governmental agency pays for the cost. The issue of whether it needs to be in the form of memorandum of understanding, or a proclamation, or a resolution of some sort, that, you know, that's, I can't answer or address that, but certainly if, you know, if the notion of the concept to, is not to approve a memorandum of understanding, but authorize the mayor to sign a proclamation, a mayor's proclamation in front of the world over there, that certainly is something that seemed to be plausible. But I don't know to what extent is the anticipation or the expectation of the, of the International Brand Management Center, vis-à-vis our mayor's duties and responsibilities.
Sorry, go ahead. So, that is a potential action. I think what, because of the time changes and the timeliness of this item, we would need to act on something like that in a revised fashion, with the understanding that it may not be accepted, and then it would just, it would just be a moot point. So, if that is an option that the council has interest in, then we can certainly consider that as well. Is there any other additional discussion?
The, the other option I would ask for is that in the resolution, it also states that the, the invitation to participate is, you know, extended to all of the wine companies in the, in the town of Yountville and within the, within the town limits.
So, not the Yountville Appellation? You mean the town limits of Yountville, because we don't really have any working wineries in the town of Yountville?
Well, I mean...
Partisano.
I mean, within the wine purveyors and the wine, wine appellation, the tasting rooms, all of the wine companies that are doing business in the town of Yountville.
So, if there are some that are not part of the appellation, but they have a tasting room here in town, you'd like that representation?
Absolutely.
So, just to understand if this is a motion that's presented requiring an invitation to either Yountville Appellation or Yountville-based wineries?
Both.
Right. Or, either or, and?
Well, there's many wineries who don't have a business presence in Yountville proper, but are in the Yountville Appellation, which is...
That's true.
Well, that's what I was...
That's what you were trying to say.
I was getting at, you have people outside the town limits that are considered part of the Yountville Appellation. They are members of the appellation, and they have already been, many of them have already been reached out to, without, some with, some without response. But you're saying that at a minimum, all wineries that...
In the Yountville Appellation.
Businesses in the town of Yountville and/or the Yountville Appellation, at a minimum, are contacted for participation?
Yes.
Are invited to participate?
And they would have use of this Beijing International Brand Office in town, too?
Well, that's where, we're not part of the business component of this process. That's what, you've made it clear that you don't want to be part of the business side of it.
Well, that's, that's my question. I mean, I totally agree.
We can, we can establish, just like we do every day in town, we can establish an environment for the business community to do their business. But then, where I'm not comfortable with is when we start to step in and dictate what that business is. If, if creating the culture of making sure that every winery is invited to participate, but if we're now starting to say they have to participate, or they must be allowed to participate, that's not our role. I disagree with that. But I think it's, it's appropriate. I certainly thought the language, the way I have stated it here, Yountville, Yountville Appellation, Napa Valley Brands was all-encompassing. You're making it more specific. I intentionally left it more vague, because this whole MOU was vague and ceremonial. But if you want it, as the resolution, if we're trying to...
Well, excuse me, but that was the other part of my, was that we would also approve this resolution minus the MOU.
Understood, understood. But I'm, there's a repetition in the language in the, in the recitals of the resolution and in the MOU. So, that's why I was saying, the language is already there in both, in my opinion. But if you want it more explicitly stated, that the invitation is made to all Yountville, you know, town business, wine, wineries and Yountville Appellation wineries to participate?
Yes.
But we, you know, to be clear, we cannot obligate anyone to participate. We cannot obligate the Ministry of Commerce to, to engage them. That's not...
I understand that.
Okay. But you're talking about the initial outreach to the invitation?
Yes. That the invitation be made as part of this.
And outside of the scope of this private business.
And outside of the scope of the private...
Well, I think you're talking about adding...
Just in Part B of the resolution?
A resolution that all Yountville-based wineries and Yountville Appellation wine members be invited to participate in this program.
Correct.
Is that language accurate to your intention?
That's accurate to my, to my intentions.
If the, is that all the discussion? If, I mean, it sounds like there's crafting of a resolution, a revised resolution, minus, if I'm hearing it correctly, there's interest in removing the MOU from, from the authorization, just going by the authorizations here. So, item one would be removed, entering a memorandum of understanding. Obviously, number two wouldn't apply. Item three would still apply. Four would apply. Five has already been removed. Six applies.
Well, four doesn't apply, because there's not going to be a signing ceremony.
That's when the Chinese delegation comes to Yountville. There are already tentative plans for that to happen.
So, you strike the signing ceremony.
Yeah.
No, I'm talking about the signing ceremony here in Yountville.
Yes.
There may...
There may be one.
There may be one.
Okay, right, okay.
There may, there, there may still be signing. If we want to take out the, the word, the words, "United States memorandum," and just say, "Welcome, a Chinese trade delegation in Yountville," tentatively scheduled, we can, we can do that. So, then there's no MOU coming or going.
I could feel good with that.
Realizing that this may be rejected by the ministry, but if, if this is the only way that people are comfortable with the outreach, then it's worth a try.
Yeah, so...
Are there any, sorry, are there any other, any other language in the recitals that need to be modified, if this is the intention?
Well, even with the other businesses, I think they, we can name the Trans-Pacific Procurement, but we want to name all the other businesses. I mean, that needs to be official. Not to say all. I think they all need names.
And what's the point of that if we say all Yountville wineries and Yountville Appellation members? What, what's the point of having to have every individual name mentioned in the recital?
Quite frankly, I'm not even sure who's on the list.
Well, I guess it depends on who makes, if there's a motion to be made, if there's a need. I mean, I think it's fairly clear, those that have business licenses in the town of Yountville, and those that are members of the Yountville Appellation in good standing. I think that's what Councilmember Dornbecker is proposing. To list them by name would be redundant from that. It'd be pretty easy to verify who those businesses are.
Yeah, I'd be comfortable with that.
So, okay, just so I'm clear, what we're asking the Ministry of Commerce to accept in addition to Trans-Pacific Procurement and whatever relationship they have with them to accept, that they promote the sale of all of our Yountville-based brands and all of our Yountville-based appellations, number one.
That language is already in there as well. Now, we do have to, if you look at recital B...
I guess I really need to see it rewritten.
If you see recital B, the town of Yountville is in a valuable strategic position to promote Napa Valley products domestically and internationally, and has an interest in expanding the sales of Yountville and Napa Valley brands and services in the China market. So, that's, that's addressing the issue of even brands outside of winery-specific. Now, we would need to strike, where did I see this? In recital C, the ceremonial signing of a memorandum of understanding, I would recommend that be changed for trade development meetings and, and ceremonial activities, in case they do accept the idea of a resolution of participation or something like that. Is the town clerk getting all this down so that...
Trying. Right.
And in recital A, support the sale of Yountville-based brands, the Yountville Appellation member, and other Napa Valley wines is also stated there. We can strike the assist in the development of a global purchasing center office in Yountville because that's already been established. So recital A, the last part of the last sentence, that could stop at association of international trade, period. Are there any other modifications to the resolution as it's been discussed?
No, I was just.
I think that's good.
Yeah, I was just looking at the MOU to see if there was any, like, item two in the MOU says the town of Yountville supports the center's goal for finding Cahnowitz, et cetera. Those kind of things, I think, are supportive but not binding. So we feel like that's in there already.
Well, the MOU's not.
I know, but I'm looking at that one line and saying that was just a general, I'm trying to beef up the revolution, resolution as much as, as possible.
We would need to change, I, I mean, I think it's, it's fairly.
Okay.
Stated already multiple times, to be honest.
Okay, that's fine.
The name of, the reading of the title of the resolution would also need to be modified. To remove, develop a global purchasing center office in Yountville. Authorize the mayor to execute said agreement. So it would read, if I have this correct, approving the town of Yountville, enter, let's Authorize the mayor to travel to Beijing, China for trade development meetings and ceremonial activities as related to the launch of China's Ministry of Commerce Beijing International Trade Management Center to support trade development of Napa, Yountville and Napa Valley wine, wine-related brands and tourism.
Yes.
That sounds perfect. That sounds good.
What was that?
Did you get it?
I have approving town of Yountville authorizing mayor to travel to Beijing, China for ceremonial activities as related to the launch of China Ministry of Commerce International Trade Center to support Yountville and Napa wine-related brands and tourism. Anything missing?
Napa Valley wines and?
Yountville and Napa Valley.
So add Valley?
Napa Valley, yeah.
Okay, it's Yountville and Yountville Appellation.
Yountville and.
But they're, they're going to want wines beyond just the Yountville Appellation.
Yeah.
So we're, it's about promoting.
That's fine, that's fine. As long as both are mentioned, though, Yountville and Yountville Appellation and Napa Valley wines.
Right, I agree with that.
Okay.
Then also just, Michelle, trade development meetings and ceremonial activities?
For trade.
Development.
Beijing, China for trade development and.
Yeah, trade development and ceremonial activities.
Okay.
Okay.
Could you read that back, please?
Yes. Approving town of Yountville authorizing mayor to travel to Beijing, China for trade development and ceremonial activities as related to the launch of China's Ministry of Commerce International Trade Center to support Yountville and Napa Valley wine-related brands and tourism.
Yountville, Yountville Appellation and, so.
You need three pieces, Yountville.
Town of Yountville, Yountville Appellation, and Napa Valley wines.
Mm-hmm.
So I think we should probably distinguish town of Yountville and, and Yountville Appellation.
And Napa Valley.
Okay, trade center to support town of Yountville, Yountville Appellation, and Napa Valley wine-related brands and tourism. Okay.
I move that we approve resolution number 3100-13 as amended.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, that was a thorough discussion. So what I will need to do is immediately find out if this still qualifies for the trip, and we'll get back to you on that. Let's move on to staff informational reports. Oh, actually, I think we need to welcome back a long-lost council member.
Let me go grab him.
Is he asleep out there?
I didn't hear any snoring.
My bad.
You telling me I shouldn't have voted against this 14-hour trip?
What were you thinking?
When you posted, I didn't guess that's where you were.
Where were we?
I don't know. That's exciting for the kids, how awesome.
I'll give you the full story, it's still on the way.
Sorry for the delay, folks.
Was it down the bar?
Please stay tuned for staff informational reports.
Trying to make a cup of coffee.
Maybe the vice mayor could give us a little recap of his spring break trip. I'll wait for.
I did personal trade in Asia, let's put it that way. It was good.
It was all one-way, though, right?
Nine days in, uh.
Here is Councilmember Hall.
In Malaysia. Nine days in Malaysia, one day in Taiwan, and this day has lasted 39 hours so far with the 15-hour time change.
It's so good, you get to do it twice.
Twice.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Item 10, staff informational reports.
I have one. Mayor Dunbar, council, I just want to update you on the progress of the gas line safety project on Washington Street. So PG has been working south of California. They are doing directional drilling, and they need to locate all the crossings where there's water lines or other utilities, so they're excavating those to make sure that they don't conflict with those. Anticipated schedule is that next week they'll move north of California on Washington, so there should be more effect on the traffic in town, so just want to keep people, give people a heads-up about that. The traffic control signage is, is adequate, so I think they're getting probably a notice out, but there could be potential delays for people traveling on Washington Street, so just wanted to update you on that.
Any others? Thank you, by the way. Is that it? Can move on to council meeting reports and comments. I'll start with Napa County Transportation and Planning Agency meeting. Good news for all transit users, the Transit Center public restrooms have been reopened. They've had reasonable success at last discussion about the, at least a drop in the vandalism and, and theft, but they're going to have to continue to monitor that closely, which is what they're doing. There was an ad hoc committee established to review the weighted voting on the board. There were several board members that were, several are brand-new, and, and even more are questioning the, the origin, which no one seemed to be able to determine, and the reason for the, the weighted voting. So that's going to be evaluated again in the coming meetings. And also, there is a review and a revote on the RFP for legal services. The majority vote, even though the original vote was mistabulated, there was another vote taken, and the majority was to accept the recommendation of staff and remain with the county council. So that did not go back out for rebid. The board decided to just revote, and interestingly, the weighted voting, those, those that missed the, the, that vote, some of them had heavily weighted votes.
Yes.
That's what happens when board members leave early.
Yeah.
Any other from the NCTPA?
I thought I can remember.
Local Agency Formation Commission of Napa County. Vice mayor?
Met yesterday.
You were not there?
No, I was not.
Or did you, you didn't Skype in?
I did not. Watched that one online.
All right, you'll potentially find out. Give us a recap if there's any pertinent information. Napa River Watershed Conservancy Watershed Information Center.
Yes, that's.
That's right, that's you.
That's me. Um, yes, we had a presentation on the Napa Green Certified Land and Winery Programs with the spring overview of what regulatory issues are facing the wine industry, and the regulatory issues are massive. It's so interesting. But part of what they have, we had a presentation on a programmatic approach to getting all of the regulatory applications in. And so it seems that there's some movement in that direction for some larger programs where the watershed is being affected in a large area. They can do a programmatic application for these, to circumvent these, for permitting, excuse me, permitting, the word escaped me for a moment. But, so they're, they're doing those kinds of permits, and that seems to be working. We also had a presentation on compliance for stream and road maintenance projects and an overview of that permitting process, which is another one that's very intense. But they talked about who are the regulatory agencies and what the permits cover, and where the regulatory jurisdiction applies, and when, and how long it takes to get these, and why programmatic permitting approach may make some sense in that one. And then we had a presentation on increasing restoration on private lands through programmatic permitting. So there was a theme to this meeting. So it was all sort of gauged more at the winery properties, but it was very interesting. And then, of course, they did talk about the watershed and some of the, one of the things that I thought was very interesting, and made a note here, excuse me while I, sorry. But the Milliken Creek Project has just received a grant for $5 million to go forward. So it was wonderful committee, thank you. I really love wine. I do.
Excellent, thank you. Any other meeting reports? Other meeting reports, any comments? Councilmember Hall, I think you have at least one announcement?
Yes, so this Saturday at, I think, 6:00 PM is the second red and white affair for the Yountville Elementary School. It will be hosted at the Silverado Winery, I believe, Silverado Winery. Tickets are $25, is that right? It can be purchased either from the Yountville Elementary School, or probably the PTA. Those are my quick comments tonight.
Councilmember Mueller, any comments?
Um, no, I just saw that what I'd like to maybe put on a future agenda item, I see that we're going to be talking about performance for the town mayor, and I think quite good to do that for our town attorney, too, if we haven't done that.
You mean the town manager?
No, town attorney.
I know, but you said town mayor.
Yeah, town manager, we're doing.
Manager. You said mayor.
In the future, to put the town attorney off.
That's on until next year.
Yeah. Okay. Councilmember Dornbecker, any other comments, announcements? Vice mayor? I did just want to, I'm not sure, I'm going to spring this on Samantha, any recap on the Easter egg hunt?
It was fantastic.
Did the, I think the rain, the rain barely cooperated?
Yeah, we had a couple of big drops right after the youngest age group started, so we moved along quickly, but it, it just passed very quickly, so we were pretty much rain-free.
Excellent.
It was a great event.
A gentleman shared with me that, and I have to report it, repeat it, because it was kind of corny, but he said it was an exceptional event.
You didn't really actually have to show that.
No, that's okay. It was a hoppy, good time. We did move the breakfast down to the park, and we had, we actually ran out of food, so obviously that was successful. People liked having that option on-site before and after the egg hunt, so.
I'm glad we still celebrate Easter in Yountville, too.
Yeah.
So, I heard a lot of comments about the Easter bunny and the Easter egg hunt, so that's good.
It was a lot of fun. We actually had a really good turnout the day before we dye Easter eggs at the community center, and we actually had a few tourists with children come over, which was really fantastic. We haven't had that before, so.
Do we put tarps down on the floor?
We put it, we do it out on the grass.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Councilmember Dornbecker?
I'm sorry, I, I don't know how I, it's, this slipped my mind. I leave in the morning for Los Angeles to attend the League of California Cities Community Resources Planning Policy Committee meeting, and I will be reporting back on that.
Very good, thank you very much. I also want to just recognize, and I'm sorry because I forgot the second of our CAL FIRE that was promoted to captain, but Matt Newberry, whom many of us know, was promoted to captain and reassigned to the St. Helena area. So unfortunate, we always see these great partners in our public safety moving on, but job very well done. We're going to see some, several new faces in the CAL FIRE station in the coming months, but they assure us that we'll be very well protected still. Also, I was trying to remember the, we've all been invited to the Veterans Home 129th Anniversary Ceremony, I believe that's, I want to say April 4th, no.
April 4th at noon, but I'll be traveling to Pasadena for the same meeting, well, it's a different meeting, but, so I won't be around for that either.
But just a reminder to folks for that ceremony open to the public. Without any other comments or announcements, we list the future agenda items there, the Arts Commission, we are, we have received, I, I know we have several, but we still have a few more openings for the Arts Commission.
Yes, we do.
That's been extended.
Um, it has not.
Has not expired yet. This Friday.
Closes Friday, yes.
So.
I, I show the Founder's Day in my calendar is Friday, April 5th. Is it, do we know for sure?
I think we might need to check on that.
Okay.
Sorry, folks, for the delay.
It does say 1:00 AM, and my, my iPad still says 11:50 AM on mine, so I don't know what day it thinks it is today.
Oh, so maybe it's Taiwan time is April the 5th, so maybe it really is April the 4th.
Is today not April 3rd?
We're going to need to get back to verify that date, but it is coming up in the next week or so, so look for it. I'm sure it's in the Yountville Sun.
I'm actually, if it's on April 4th, it's this Thursday, so we will try to communicate that to all of you.
Be sure to, yes.
To make sure that we have, and I'm not mistaken, I also believe the evening of April 4th, Thursday evening, is the launch of the Valleywide Arts in April events at the Napa Valley Museum Thursday night.
Yes, that is, that is true. I'm trying to take advantage of our paperless.
I, I, somehow, I do believe Thursday is also the Veterans Home Anniversary Day for some reason.
I just think my iPad.
And what day is it?
April 4th.
Thank you, at noon.
Come on, Louis. I have it at 10:00 AM.
You're not sure what time it is?
But that was, that was when they said they didn't have a schedule.
That's what they announced at the LA Council, was it noon?
Fourth at noon. Yes, and it's now no longer April 3rd.
You're free to get there at 10:00.
I'm not going to do that, 10:00 tonight.
Okay, with that, we see the future agenda items. We do, I believe, have need for closed session.
Not for swank tonight, no, no, Mr. Mayor.
But we do have very brief, with no reportable action anticipated, on item 13B, Public Employee Performance Evaluation, Town Manager. In case folks are not going to stay tuned, I just wanted to remind everyone that I'm going to ask that we adjourn in memory of Oscar Rhodes. We're not adjourning at this time, but we will be doing so in, in his memory when we get out of closed session. So for those that aren't not going to stay tuned, thank you for being with us tonight, and we are going to adjourn into closed session.
This time, we ask the town.